Good morning, everyone. Bonjour tout le monde. As we begin our meeting today and on behalf of Ottawa City Council, I wish to acknowledge that Ottawa is built on unceded Anishnaabe Algonquin territory.
The peoples of the Anishnaabe Algonquin Nation have lived on this territory for millennia. Their culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land. The city of Ottawa honours all First Nations inuit and Métis people and their valuable past and present contributions to this land.
Those who are able, please rise for a moment of personal reflection. Thank you. Merci. Please remain standing for the playing of the national anthem. Thank you. Merci. I'll now ask for the roll call, please. Councillor Luloff.
Bon matin.
Councillor Dudas.
Ici.
Councillor Hill.
Present.
Councillor Kelly.
Here.
Councillor Kelly.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councillor Johnson.
Here.
Councillor Devine.
Here.
Councillor Bradley.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Conseillère Plante.
Ici.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor Troster.
Here.
Councillor Leeper.
Good morning.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor Kits.
Here.
Councillor Skolski.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
Here.
Conseiller DeRache.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Councillor Lowe.
Present.
Mayor Sudcliffe.
Here.
Monsieur Le Man, nous avons quorum. Merci.
You have quorum.
Confirmation of minutes from the city council meeting of July 23rd, including the confidential minutes, are those carried? Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Conseillère Plante. Vous avez une déclaration?
I, Stephanie Plante, declare potential deemed procurney interest on the Integrity Commissioner's report listed as item 10.1 on the agenda in accordance with subsection 5.2.1 of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. The Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, subsection 5.2.1, provides as follows: If the following rules apply: If the matter is under consideration at a meeting or part of a meeting, is to consider whether to suspend the remuneration paid of the member under subsection 222.4, 5, or 6 of the Municipal Act 2001 or under subsection 165 or 6 of the City of Toronto Act 2006. Despite clauses 1, B, and C, the member may take part in the discussion on the matter, including making submissions to council or the local board, as the case may be, may attempt to influence the vote on question in respect to the matter, whether before, during, or after the meeting. However, the member is not permitted to vote on any questions in respect to the matter. As such, I will not be voting on any matters related to the IC's report.
Merci. Are there any other declarations of interest? There were no regrets. Motion to introduce reports, councillor DeRache.
Motion to introduce reports. That the report from the Integrity Commissioner, entitled "Report to Council on an Inquiry Respecting the Conduct of Councillor Plante", Planning and Housing Committee Report 51, and the report from the City Clerk, entitled "Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending August 22, 2025", be received and considered.
Is that carried? All right. We will hold item 9. And just for clarification, when Conseilier Plante was speaking, she referred to item 10, but it's actually item 9, right? Okay. We'll hold that. Item 10.1 is a status update on council inquiries and motions for the period ended August 22, 2025. Is that received?
Received.
From Planning and Housing Committee, 11.1, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, 47 Beechwood Avenue, 12 Douglas Avenue, and 5 Springfield Road. Is that carried?
Dissent. And I do have just a quick statement.
Sure, please go ahead, councillor King.
Thank you, your worship. I am dissenting on this application while acknowledging the applicant's efforts to address community feedback. While I support intensification along Beechwood Avenue, as redevelopment should occur on corridors as per the city's official plan, I believe several key concerns remain unresolved, including massing that dominates the Springfield-Beechwood corner without adequate transition, along with unclear operational impacts on neighbouring homes. Though I will not be supporting this application, I am encouraged through discussions last week with the applicant that there will be continuing work with planning staff and the community to address other issues, including enhancing green space, buffering for Douglas Avenue residents, and enhancing cycling interconnectivity to improve safety. I believe this application demonstrates the need for additional guidelines concerning transition zones between existing neighbourhoods and structures and adjacent higher-density zones to safeguard the character of our traditional main streets. Rito Rockliff residents deserve development that respects neighbourhood character while contributing positively to its evolution, and I'll be seeking such guidelines as we deliberate the new zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor King. Zoning bylaw amendment for 2409 Carlson Avenue. Is that carried? And the bulk consent agenda, is that carried? Okay. Returning to item 9.1, the report to council on an inquiry respecting conduct of Conseilier Plante. I know there are a couple of motions, and also, Conseilier Plante, you wanted to speak to this? So, go ahead.
No. Can I speak on councillor Brockington's motion? Or do you want me to do it now?
Well, if councillor Brockington would like to introduce... Do you want to introduce the motion first? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. So, I am moving a motion this morning, and I hope it will be put on the screen. I'll just read it. Mayor, whereas the Integrity Commissioner has issued a report regarding the conduct of councillor Plante pursuant to the Code of Conduct for members of council, and whereas council has the authority to accept, amend, or reject the recommendations from the Integrity Commissioner and to approve any additional corrective measures, therefore be it resolved that council receive the Integrity Commissioner's report. And mayor, I do have some introductory comments if you believe this is appropriate for me to do so at this time. Okay. So, thank you, mayor, and thank you, colleagues. I'm no fan of Integrity Commissioner reports, but I acknowledge their necessity and the system we have in place to report, assess, and deliberate on alleged breaches of the Code of Conduct. All of members of all matters before our councils pass that have gone through the Integrity Commissioner, the one before us today appears on the surface to be the least egregious, and many have questioned the existence of the report and the necessity to investigate the original complaints. Our colleague councillor Plante is an engaged, intelligent, and passionate councillor, a councillor we need at this table, particularly to address and represent the people of Ottawa Vanye and their diversity of issues. And it's difficult for me, as someone who actively supports and endorses women, to run for and seek community leadership roles, including at this table, to then be faced with a report that is now judging councillor Plante of all issues, the use of an emoji. Councillor Plante was right to engage on the spring stretcher matter and to share her point of view and counter misinformation being spread in various communities. And while I do believe there are always opportunities to turn down the temperature and tone during more colourful discussions, including those online, I am not willing to accept the Integrity Commissioner's recommendations. Councillor Plante has gone through the Integrity Commissioner process. She's been deemed to have participated fully. She removed posts online, and she even offered to meet with the complainants, who all refused that offer. The Integrity Commissioner's report is public and available for all to read, all 39 pages. And I don't believe the matter needs to go any further. So, when I am asked today to punish councillor Plante, I'm simply not going there. The public report is available to all and lists her actions and engagement and can be weighed by her residents when they decide who to vote for a year from now. So, I ask council colleagues to simply vote to formally receive the report today and take no further action. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. I'm going to go to councillor Gower next to introduce the other motion, and then Conseilier Plante, you can speak.
Thanks, mayor. Whereas the Integrity Commissioner has issued a report regarding the conduct of councillor Plante pursuant to the Code of Conduct for members of council, and whereas, as provided for in both section 223.4, 5 of the Municipal Act 2001 and section 15 of the Code of Conduct for members of council, the Integrity Commissioner may make recommendations to city council with respect to sanctions and other corrective actions. And whereas city council has the authority to impose any of the sanctions and other corrective actions recommended by the Integrity Commissioner, as well as other sanctions or corrective actions council deems appropriate arising from the findings of the Integrity Commissioner, subject to the Municipal Act. And whereas council has the authority to accept, amend, or reject the recommendations from the Integrity Commissioner and to approve any additional corrective measures, therefore be it resolved that council approve the following as a replacement for the recommendations set out in the Integrity Commissioner's report: That council receive the Integrity Commissioner's report, including the finding that councillor Plante contravened section 7 of the Code of Conduct and reprimand councillor Plante for said contraventions. I don't have any additional comments, but just for clarity, this would remove the suspension of remuneration as the recommendations come into council. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gower. Conseilier Plante.
Hi. So, I have a couple of questions for you, Commissioner. If you could just keep your answers to yes or no, simply because I'm short on time, I would appreciate that. So, colleagues, every court, tribunal, adjudicative body must base their findings on facts. So, I'm going to speak today in support of councillor Brockington's motion: Clear, convincing, and cogent facts established on a balance of probabilities. That is the evidentiary standard here in Ontario. It is the standard across Canada, and it's the standard all ICs are bound to apply. So, my first question, Commissioner, is you chose to analyse my post not individually but as a whole, correct? Okay, thank you. So, the Commissioner acknowledged that, as a whole, none of my post contained...
I'm just going to... Just for your own clarification, so you don't need to worry about it. The time that anyone spends answering a question does not count towards your...
Fair.
...five minutes. So, if the Integrity Commissioner takes longer to answer a question, it won't impact your time.
Thank you. As a whole, my post did not include abusive language. That means there was no threats, there was no insults, no profanity, nothing that meets the ordinary threshold of abuse, bullying, intimidation. Instead, she criticises my tone. And tone is not the same as abuse or bullying. So, my understanding is you acknowledge that none of the post contained any abusive language, correct?
Mr. Mayor, I'm concerned with where this may be going in terms of the lines of questioning. My investigation is complete. The findings are in the report with my recommendations. This is not with the yes or no answers in terms of what the council is looking for. It's up to council now to decide whether to accept my... I'm here to provide clarification, but not to re-evaluate my report.
And I appreciate that context. So, for clarification for the council, none of the post contained abusive language, correct?
My report stands, and I have indicated that.
Okay, thank you very much. So, the Commissioner relies on a case called Joubayville v Chadham Kent to justify her foundings. So, in that case, in case you haven't read it, the councillor posted messages that were openly abusive and hostile towards other councillors. And as we just heard, the Commissioner says, "I did not use abusive or hostile language." So, comparing my situation to Joubayville is misleading. The report also post says that my post had a chilling effect on public debate and that people were intimidated to silence. This is a very, very serious claim. But if you look at the evidence, the IC acknowledges on page 21 that it's not based on surveys or patterns or complaints. It rests on one single letter from one community association president, that one email from one person making unsubstantiated claims. Yet, the Commissioner uses that claim to say that I silenced debate across the whole community. That is a very weak claim for such a very serious accusation. So, just very quickly, you only have, Commissioner, you only have one letter from one community association saying there was a chilling effect on the community, correct?
The evidence is in my report, and it also talks about the witnesses in terms of how they felt as well.
Okay. Do you have any other evidence? Was there any other evidence cited in the reports to substantiate the claim that the broader community, not the claimants, the broader community was intimidated?
Again, councillor, the report speaks for itself.
Okay. So, okay, thank you. So, I wanted to talk quickly about the sanctions. So, sanctions in any adjudicative body are supposed to be progressive. They get harsher as the conduct is repeated or if the councillor shows no willingness to improve. In this case, the Integrity Commissioner acknowledges this is the first time that I've been frowned and breached the code. As the report admits, I deleted the post. I offered to meet with them on multiple occasions, which was refused. Normally, those facts would lead to like an educational sanction, training, apology, letter writing, et cetera. Yet, we are here with a recommendation for suspension. Given these mitigating factors, first offence, deleted post, openness to mediation, you'd expect a proportionate response. The Commissioner could have amended a reminder, a warning, mandatory training. But instead, she went right to suspension of pay, which is the most serious penalty available, short of removal from committee. That is not proportionate, that is punitive. So, given these mitigating factors that you outlined in your report, was suspending my pay the only proportionate option available?
Again, Mr. Mayor, councillor, I've explained in this particular case how I came to the recommendation in question.
And it was the only one available?
There are two sanctions under the act, which is reprimand or a suspension of pay up to 90 days.
And there was no option for a reprimand of like training or anything like that?
I've explained my rationale in the report because the reason for doing a sanction is indicated.
Okay. I appreciate that, thank you. So, I also wanted to quote directly from the Commissioner's report on page 23. "I accept that each of the witnesses felt subjectively the negative feelings described," end quote. In other words, the finding rests on how people say they felt, the feeling of being intimidated or demeaned. But political debate is emotional. People are upset, offended, frustrated over a lot of different things. We deal with this every single day in our inbox and in person. Our job is to argue about policy, and people will sometimes disagree strongly. So, Commissioner, can you confirm that your findings rest in part on how people said they felt rather than objective evidence of intimidation?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I was just looking for the...
It's page 23.
Sorry. My response, because the council did have a chance to respond... Oh, I get the echo. To the five days. And so, during that, I actually talked about the fact that while I accept the comment from the witnesses, that I also used an objective test in terms of what's the reasonable persons test in looking at what they have felt disrespected, demeaned, or harassed. And that's in my report.
Okay, thank you. So, finally, another decorum from the report, quote, "I accept that responded did not set out to intimidate or bully. However, I find it rose to the level of intimidation and bullying." So, think about that. She accepted, "I did not intend to bully, there was no intention, yet she found bullying and intimidation." If intent doesn't matter, then one of us could be accused of bullying simply because someone doesn't like our tone. I understand that some of my comments were perceived by certain residents as disrespectful, and I regret if my tone contributed to those feelings. That was never my intent, as the Integrity Commissioner says so herself. My goal is always to speak clearly about what I saw as an important political issue affecting our communities. I understand this uniquely because Rito Vanye consistently has the lowest voter turnout in the city at any election, federal, provincial, municipal. Many residents, when I go door-to-door, tell me they do not participate in elections because they feel their voices don't matter. But what we've heard is just as important. The Commissioner admits that she did not analyse my post individually. She admits I disclosed no personal information. She provided, just one minute, she provided no case law that supports treating feelings as a standard for adjudication, and she cited no authority that allows an Integrity Commissioner to substitute feelings for facts. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, for just a point of clarification, because I think in terms of I have looked at all of the posts, but in presenting my analysis of findings is where I looked at it as a whole in terms of the pattern.
Okay. Thank you. So, we will vote first on the motion by councillor Gower, which again, to be clear, is changing the... Removing the financial penalty and substituting a reprimand for the financial penalty. Is that carried? Is that... Okay. Recorded vote, please. Councillor Kits.
Yes.
Conseillère Plante. Councillor Bradley.
Yes.
Councillor Troster.
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
No.
Councillor Johnson.
Yes.
Councillor Leeper.
Yes.
Councillor Luloff.
No.
Councillor Lowe.
No.
Councillor Kelly.
Yes.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Hubley.
No.
Councillor Skolski.
Yes.
Councillor Hill.
Yes.
Councillor Dudas.
Yes.
Councillor Brown.
Yes.
Councillor Devine.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor Carr.
No.
My apologies. That was a no. Councillor Curry.
Yes.
Councillor DeRache.
Wait.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor Brockington.
No.
Mayor Sudcliffe.
Yes.
Sixteen yeas, eight nays. Okay. Carried? All right. We are going to move to item 13 on the agenda, which is our in-camera item. And I'll ask councillor DeRache to please introduce the motion to move in camera, which is seconded by councillor Troster.
Yes, thank you. I should have mentioned the earlier one was seconded by councillor Troster as well. Motion to resolve in camera, be it resolved that city council resolve in camera pursuant to Procedure Bylaw 2025-100, subsection 13.1e, litigation or potential litigation affecting the city in 13.1f, the receiving advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose with respect to stage one LRT legal updates.
Is that carried? All right. We'll begin the closed session as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna get started again.
Okay, we're gonna start again. For the benefit of the public joining us, Ottawa City Council just met in camera pursuant to procedure bylaw 2025-100 as follows. Subsections 13-1E litigation or potential litigation affecting the city, and 13-1F the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege including communications necessary for that purpose to receive information with respect to... to the Stage One Light Rail Transit legal updates. During the closed session, no votes were taken other than procedural motions and/or directions to staff. Motion to adopt reports, councillor De Rush.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Troster.
The report from the Integrity Commissioner entitled "Report to council on an inquiry respecting the conduct of councillor Plant," planning and housing committee report number 51, and the report from city clerk entitled "Status Update: Council Inquiry and Motions for the Period Ending August 22, 2025," be received and adopted as amended.
Motions of which notice has previously been given. Councillor Brown has a motion on the commemorative naming of Mary Simon Park. Is that carried? Thank you. We have two motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, both for reasons of timing. First is a motion from councillor Hill on appointments to the Community Safety and Wellbeing Advisory Committee. On suspension of the rules, is that carried? Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion is with regards to filling vacant seats on the Community Safety and Wellbeing Advisory Committee, so I will read the resolution. Therefore, be it resolved that council approve the appointment of the following members to fill the vacant statutory positions: Representative of the education sector, Mark Bertrand, Director of Education and Secretary Treasurer, Conseil des Ecoles Catholiques du Centre-Est; Two, Representative of the health and/or mental health sector, Dr. Trevor Arnsan, Medical Health Officer of Health; Three, an entity that provides custodial services to children and/or youth, Kelly Raymond, Executive Director, Children's Aid Society of Ottawa. Be it further resolved that all terms to be effective upon council approval for the remainder of the 22 to 26 term of council and until their successors are appointed, be it further resolved that staff be directed to continue to consult with the Ottawa Aboriginal Coalition so that they may nominate a replacement member when available for council's improvement. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, councillor Hill. Is that carried? Councillor Tierney's motion is on endorsing councillor Divine for an FCM committee. On suspension of the rules, is that carried?
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just dispense with a lot of the wearisins and just say councillor Divine's worked very hard and attended many of the conferences and board meetings with FCM. Committee calls have gone out. There's no guarantee, but to have this resolution is very important. There'll be a couple of selections of committee members over the next couple of years, so therefore be resolved that the city of Ottawa endorse councillor Sean Divine to serve as a committee member on the committees of FCM Board of Directors starting from the period June 2025, ending in June 2027, and there be further resolved that all costs associated with councillor Divine's attendance as related to FCM meetings be absorbed by the council administration budget in keeping with the councillor's expense policy. Thank you.
Is that carried? Thank you. Notices of motion, councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. This motion is related to the naming of Michael Mack Rink. I'll speak to it at our next meeting. I'll introduce it today. Whereas the late Michael Mack was a lifelong resident of the Carlton Heights neighbourhood of River Ward, and whereas Michael Mack was passionate, loyal and dedicated to his community and served on the Board of Directors of the Carlton Heights and Area Residence Association for many years, including as president, whereas Michael Mack was also a former paddler at the Rideau Canoe Club in his early days and became a dedicated volunteer at the club, as confirmed by other volunteers, quote, "Mike spent thousands of hours around the club doing maintenance, shoveling snow and sorting out mountains of bottles and cans for recycling during our home nationals," end of quote, and whereas Michael Mack served as the outdoor rink coordinator in Carlton Heights Park for countless winters, sometimes the sole volunteer in preparing and maintaining ice for the season, whereas the Board of Directors of the Carlton Heights and Area Residence Association supports the naming of the Carlton Heights Rink to commemorate the life and service of Michael Mack. Therefore, be it resolved that the outdoor community rink located in Carlton Heights Park be named the Michael Mack Rink, and that all costs associated with the creation installation of the bronze plaque, as well as possible other signage on one hockey board, be covered by the local councillor, Ward 16. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Brockington. Councillor Menard, I think you have two notices of motion.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. Whereas a climate change council sponsors group was established during the 2018-2022 term of council and reestablished this term of council with the appointment of councillors Menard, Carr, Hill, Kavanaugh and Brown, whereas the role of the sponsors group is to provide advice to staff, integrate climate considerations into committee work and champion implementation of the Climate Change Master Plan, therefore be resolved that the composition of the Climate Change Council sponsors group be increased up to six members of council with continued representation from all areas of the city, and be it further resolved that councillor Sean Divine be appointed as the sixth member of the Climate Change Council sponsors group for the remainder of this term of council. And the second notice of motion, whereas part of the 2022-2026 midterm governance review, council considered a November 2024 report from an independent third party, MNP Business Consulting and Advisory Services, LLP, which included a review of member remuneration against comparator municipalities, among other matters, and whereas the MNP report recommended that to support ongoing market-aligned remuneration, consider implementing an automatic formal market review process at the end of year two or year three of the elected official's term, with any approved adjustments taking effect at the start of the new elected official's term, and whereas approving a future adjustment to align Ottawa City Council's remuneration with the average remuneration for comparator municipalities at the start of the next term of council in 2026 would provide for the market review approach as recommended in the MNP report, therefore be resolved that staff be directed to include in the 2026-2030 governance review report an adjustment to Ottawa City Council remuneration to align with the average remuneration for comparator municipalities at that time, as described in this motion to take effect on November 15, 2026. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Menard. Councillor De Rush?
Thank you very much. Whereas a sidewalk is needed to better serve pedestrians using the Linebank Station on Linebank Road, whereas this sidewalk should have been included in the plans for the station like other stations related to the LXT's expansion but was not, whereas the funding was recently secured through the works-in-progress process for the sidewalk to coincide with other roadwork at this location to be undertaken by the developer, whereas the sidewalk is necessary for students attending the local high school in Riverside South, therefore be it resolved that staff work with the developer to expedite the cost-sharing agreement and the construction of the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you councillor De Rush. Motion to introduce bylaws, councillor De Rush.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Troster.
That the bylaw listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaw three readings be read and passed. Had the... carried?
Confirmation bylaw, councillor De Rush.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Troster, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of August 27, 2025.
Is that carried? Inquiries, councillor Skolski.
Thank you. So every resident of Ottawa deserves access to a safe and reliable supply of water. While 93% of Ottawa residents and businesses are connected to Ottawa's central drinking water system supplied by the Ottawa River, 7% of Ottawa residents and businesses are connected to wells for their drinking water. The city operates six communal wells in Vars, Richmond, Carp, Greeley and Munster. On August 19, 2025, the Rideau Valley Conservation Authority declared a Level 3 low-water advisory, and yesterday, the South Nation Conservation's Water Response Team also declared a Level 3, or a severe, low-water advisory now impacting all of Osgood Ward. Mississippi Valley Conservation Authority declared Level 2 low-water advisory for the Carp River sub watershed on August 6, 2025, and planned to meet on September 3 to consider conditions. Low... sorry, Level 3 low-water advisory conditions mean that water supply no longer meets demand in certain regions and ongoing drought conditions are putting increased pressure on surface and groundwater supplies. Under this advisory, all water users are asked to voluntarily reduce water use and suspend nonessential water uses until natural supplies begin to recover. So in the neighbouring municipality of the township of North Dundas, an outdoor water use ban has been in effect since August 6. So we have some questions. What has been the city's response to the low-water advisories? How has the city communicated to residents on private wells that there is a low-water advisory in effect? Since a private well is a personal water source on private property, does the city of Ottawa have the authority to impose restrictions on private well owners to limit outdoor water use in a drought? How do other rural municipalities use bylaws to restrict outdoor water use for private well owners? What can the city do to prepare for future drought conditions and improve the climate resiliency of rural communities? And when approving applications for new housing developments that rely on wells, how is the potential for drought conditions taken into effect? And we're hoping to see those... I'm humbling to see those responses. Reporting back to ARAAC and to council as part of... as soon as possible or no later than Q1 of 2026. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bradley?
Thanks much, Mr. Mayor. The inquiry I have is slightly different than the one I submitted to the clerk's office, so I will read it and then submit the revised version. On August 26, 2025, the city manager informed all city staff and city council that the city of Ottawa will return to five days in office as the new standard for all city employees effective January 1, 2026. The memo cited that this change in workforce policy will help strengthen the organisational culture and build confidence and trust in the city's ability to continue to provide responsive and reliable service to the public and support the overall wellness and success of the organisation. While workforce policies fall within the city manager's purview, this significant policy shift raises important questions about evidence-based decision-making and strategic alignment, specifically concerns been raised in the public regarding the environmental impact, traffic congestion, affordability, employee morale, support for small businesses in outer urban and suburban communities, and building and supporting 15-minute neighbourhoods across the city. To ensure transparency, I respectfully request the city manager provide counsel with the specific research, data and evidence that inform this decision to mandate five-day in-office attendance, and a detailed analysis demonstrating how this workforce policy aligns with the city of Ottawa's 2023 to 2026... sorry, 2022 to 2026 strategic priorities and our official plan objectives, and our city's competitive position as an employer. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bradley. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, Mayor. The city clerk does not have a copy, but I have written it out and I'll provide it to them in just one minute. Would staff in solid waste services work with local school boards on a potential solution for inner-school blue-bin presence and curbside collection? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other inquiries? Okay, just before we wrap up, I just wanted to take note of a little bit of hardware that is here. Two different... two different things. First of all, you'll note the trophy in front of councillor Kits, which we share together. Councillor Kits and I were the co-winners of the ploughing match at the Ottawa Carlton Ploughman's Association event that took place a few days ago. So congratulations to councillor Kits and to me, and to me as well. I'll note that there were other councillors who were competing in that event, who do not have trophies in front of them, including some who allegedly farm for a living. It's rigged, Mr. Mayor, it's rigged. And secondly, I wanted more importantly frankly, because the ploughing took no time at all, and an Ironman triathlon takes an extraordinary amount of training and effort. Note the medal that is being worn by councillor Kavanaugh for her participation and completion of the Ironman Canada event in Ottawa earlier this month. A much greater accomplishment and very, very impressive councillor Kavanaugh, congratulations. Okay, motion to adjourn, councillor De Rush.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Troster.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of August 27, the 27 of August 2025 be adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Any questions about the plowing match before we get started here? How challenging it was and...
Good afternoon. Bonjour à tous. My name is Kendra Tittle and I'll be your moderator. Je m'appelle Kendra Tittle et je serai l'animatrice de ce point de presse. I will now invite each agency in alphabetical order to ask their questions. You may ask one question with a follow-up. Par ordre alphabétique, j'invite maintenant chaque organisme à poser une question et une question de suivi. We'll now start with CBC Ottawa, Arthur Whitecrummy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yes, and sorry to keep you waiting. Uh, we, um, had two motions on the table about Counselor Plante and the Integrity Commissioner's report. I'm just wondering why you chose to support the Gower motion, uh, calling for a reprimand but not a suspension of pay? And why, uh, you didn't allow councillors to vote on the Brockington motion as well?
Just on the second question, uh, once the, uh, motion, uh, proposed by Counselor Gower passed, the, the Brockington motion, like they were, they were mutually exclusive. So the, the Brockington motion no longer applied. Um, so that, that was just a procedural thing. Um, I want to say that I think a lot of councillors and myself were, uh, spent a lot of time thinking about this and were very conflicted about the situation. It's never comfortable to be in a position where you're being asked to rule on a report about one of your colleagues. And I think there was a lot going on at that time that needs to be taken into account. Um, and it was a very politically charged issue. Their emotions were high. A lot of strong feelings were expressed. So I have a lot of respect and understanding for the position that Counselor Plante felt she was in at the time. Um, but, uh, you know, and, and there were a lot of different points that were raised in the discussion about it over the last couple of the day, a couple of days. At the heart of it, though, I think was a simple question of whether there was a breach of the code of conduct. The Integrity Commissioner found that there was. I thought her findings were sufficient, uh, to determine that there was a breach in the code of conduct. Then the second question becomes what's an appropriate, uh, penalty for that? I think in previous cases, when we've seen a breach of the code, uh, and it's the first time it's happened for a particular councillor that there is a reprimand and not a, a suspension of pay. So I thought that was appropriate in this case, and that's why I supported Counselor Gower's motion.
Okay, we, uh, don't have, uh, the, we don't have, uh, the commissioner here to ask about her findings. But I'm wondering, based on, it seems like a lot of this centered on the interpretation of the memes and the emojis, which were obviously ambiguous in a lot of ways. I'm wondering how you interpreted it, them, and, and, and what you saw in those particular memes, those particular, you know, emojis, that was problematic from your point of view?
I think the Integrity Commissioner's report speaks for itself. And I would just say that I think no matter what's going on in the community, it's incumbent upon us as elected officials to, to turn the temperature down, not up, to raise the standard of, of public dialogue and not lower it, uh, to engage in, in debate in a respectful way, uh, and in, in a way that, uh, communicates about facts and doesn't undermine the integrity of the people we're debating with. Um, and so, um, I think, you know, we're, uh, the, the Integrity Commissioner's findings speak for themselves. I'm not going to comment on, on the intricacies of that. Um, but I think it's a lesson for all of us that when we engage with the community, we hold ourselves to a higher standard. We hold ourselves to the code of conduct that we've all agreed to. And it's our job to elevate the discussion and keep the discussion focused on the facts and not on the people involved.
Thank you. Next we have Ben Andrews, CBC Radio.
Hi, Ben.
Hello. Uh, so I have a question about the five-day work week. Um, we heard from Premier Doug Ford earlier today saying that the decision fell with the mayor and he was pleased by the decision. Um, but I know Mayor Sekulafu had previously said it, it fell with the city manager. So for clarity, who was the final decision-maker and what was the rationale behind the return to office for five days?
Yeah, so just to be clear, the decision was made by the city manager. Um, and, uh, and it's not a political decision. It's not within the jurisdiction of city council to make those decisions. So Wendy updated me on, on what's, and has updated me regularly during the time that I've been mayor about our workforce policies, but that's simply her providing updates to me. I don't make the decision. City council doesn't make the decision.
Okay, and then follow-up to that about transit. I mean, I know most, um, workers were already in the office five days a week, but with the increased people coming into the office, is there an expected change to transit and was that part of the decision-making process?
Yeah, thanks very much, um, for that. And I think, you know, it's important to focus on the fact that when we look at the number of staff that this affects, it's a small number across the organization. It would be less than 2,600 people. And you look at that in terms of the population of the city of Ottawa, which is over a million now. Um, and we promote transit use here. It's really important. We also promote active transportation, um, for folks in terms of how they get to and from work. But I think also of importance is the fact that when you look at the return to work, our city is so big. We have a rural, suburban, and urban diversity of geography. And we have hundreds of locations where people come to work every day. So it's not like they're coming to work in one area that's, you know, congested or pointed to downtown, but it's across the city. So what our transit people do very regularly, and you hear them speak about us and you see the announcements, is they look at every quarter, um, what's happening with transit use. You see those scheduled changes and you see those seasonal changes happen on a quarterly basis. So they'll be looking at that regularly as we move forward.
Okay, and actually, would I be able to get a response to the first question as well from you, Wendy?
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, uh, the mayor's correct. Um, this decision rests with me. Uh, this decision is something, um, in terms of myself and the senior leadership team looking at, um, our hybrid, uh, workplace on a regular basis and looking at what's happening across the industry. And I think first and foremost, the most important thing here at the city is that we're providing excellent service to our clients and our businesses. That is our focus. Making this change, we want to, uh, increase culture, innovation. I'm going to say, uh, relationship building at the city in terms of people coming back to the workplace. That's really important. Um, and, you know, and I think about other cities or what's happening across not only, you know, Ontario, Canada, um, and our counterparts. We look at people who are making this change. We're not the only ones. So I think about what's happening, I think in the city of Brampton, they're returning to a five-day work week. We look at some of the, um, larger corporations such as Amazon, um, TD. You know, they're moving towards this. But this is really about, you know, a shift and a change, embracing our culture and making sure that we are delivering that excellent service in the best way that we can to our residents and our businesses.
Great, thank you.
And if I could just, I'll just add something on the previous question, Ben, if that's okay. The, you know, the, I did the math last night just out of curiosity. Uh, and, you know, if you take the, the total workforce of the city of Ottawa and the percentage that we're already going to the workplace five days a week, we're talking about bus drivers and mechanics and, and people who plow the roads or clean the roads. Uh, we're talking about police officers, paramedics, firefighters, uh, people who work in community centers and so on. If you take the total workforce and you calculate how much more time is going to be spent in the workplace because of this change that's being made, it's about a six or seven percent increase in the amount of time that our total workforce is going to spend at the workplace. So it's not like we're going from thousands of people who are zero days a week in the office to thousands of people suddenly being on, on buses and trains five days a week to go to work. It's a six or seven percent increase in the amount of time that our entire workforce is going to be spending on location.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dylan Dyson, CTV Ottawa.
Uh, hi, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to follow up more on, uh, the five-day work week. Um, would you be able to speak more to the rationale behind the decision? Um, it sounds like, um, from what's been said, you were making this change because a lot, a lot of other places are making this change, but were there studies done into workplace efficiency? Was there research done into end product? I know you say you're trying to improve the culture. Um, was there surveys done saying the morale at the workplace of the city of Ottawa is down? What was the rationale?
I'll let Wendy answer that question. It was her decision.
Uh, sorry, I'm only one person, so just let me...
I'm only one person too.
Thanks very much, Dylan. And thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I definitely talked about the culture change here at the city. And, you know, we, we speak to our staff on a very regular basis. I've been out about, um, you know, constantly since I stepped into this position. And you get feedback from staff and, you know, admittedly that feedback gets mixed in terms of, um, coming into the workplace versus not coming into the workplace. But the feedback, um, that is consistently heard is around the relationship building and how great it is to be in the workplace and continue, um, to build those relationships. So that's part of the decision nation, the decision-making in terms of making sure that, um, we've got that relationship building happening at the city. But also if you're looking at literature on this and the research that you speak of, it's in two different places, right? So research talks about, um, return to the workplace, the benefits of returning to the workplace. You hear the opposite as well. So no one's going to land in the same place. For us, it's a focus on improving the culture in our organization and ensuring that we're delivering that excellent service to our residents and our businesses.
Uh, and I guess, excuse me, my follow-up will be this applies to 100% of city workers. So including councillors, their staff, um, so like, you know, there won't be, uh, councillors on Zoom during meetings anymore. Like they'll, they'll be here, everybody.
I think it's important to make the distinction that this applies to city staff, right? Councillors have discretion with respect to themselves and their offices.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to ask my question in English because it's directed to Mrs. Stephenson. It's also concerning the five-day, um, week back to, to the office. Um, the city's decision on this went, it appears pretty fast after the comments made by the premier, uh, last week at AMO. Um, how was that process? And what do you say to the, um, the union that says they, they have not been consulted? And this is a breach of their collective agreement?
So this is something that we've been looking at over time and we continue to review. Um, you, you saw, I'm going to say if we go back pre-COVID, the posture change in terms of, you know, the hybrid work as we went through COVID. And quite frankly, um, in terms of how we delivered everything that we did, that changed on a very regular basis, right? Based on, um, what was happening, the directives were getting from the province. It was, you know, constant pivoting. And I know everyone's tired of hearing that word pivot. Uh, and so we've continued to review that as we've come out of COVID. We've changed our posture. Leadership was back in the office, you know, four to five days a week. Um, as you've heard, uh, the average staff, 85% of them are at work every day. Others are at the office or at their place of work, two to five days a week. So when you look at that and you look at the number of employees that work at the city of Ottawa, they're in the office or at the workplace, I'm going to say about 4.64 days a week. So we've made that gradual change. I recognize that, um, you know, I, I've heard...
The city's decision on this went, it appears pretty fast after the comments made by the premier last week at AML. How was that process and what do you say to the the union that says they have not been consulted and this is a breach of their collective agreement?
So this is something that we've been looking at over time and we continue to review. You saw, I'm going to say, if we go back pre-COVID, the posture change in terms of, you know, the hybrid work as we went through COVID. And quite frankly, in terms of how we delivered everything that we did, that changed on a very regular basis, right? Based on what was happening, the directives were getting from the province. It was constant pivoting. And I know everyone's tired of hearing that word pivot. And so we've continued to review that as we've come out of COVID. We've changed our posture. Leadership was back in the office, you know, four to five days a week. As you've heard, the average staff, 85% of them are at work every day. Others are at the office or at their place of work, two to five days a week. So when you look at that and you look at the number of employees that work at the city of Ottawa, they're in the office or at the workplace, I'm going to say about 4.64 days a week. So we've made that gradual change. I recognize that, you know, I've heard the union's reaction. We had a discussion with them. I appreciate that change can be difficult and that we will continue to have discussions with the union as we move through this.
Yeah, so the union also indicates that there are, like you said, it's a small portion of the employee and the workforce employed by the city. There are about 1,300 hybrid field from between the employer and the employee in place currently. They have to be renegotiated in the fall. Will this decision come with change in those guidelines for a hybrid agreement with the employees or not? And if so, will this affect the renewal of those agreements?
I think one of the important things is that, you know, we've tried to give a long period of adaptation to the change. So you look at four months between basically now and January 1st, which gives people time in terms of, you know, understanding this, understanding how it might impact them personally and what might change in terms of, you know, where they're going to go to work and et cetera. And so I think that that helps in terms of making that transition. We will, as I said, continue to have those discussions with the union. There is provisions within the collective agreement that speak to alternative work arrangements and hybrid work. Those things are not changing. And I think what's really important is when we talk about, you know, the alternative work arrangements, again, it's individualized, it's a conversation that's going to happen between an employee and a supervisor. It's based on the role that they play or the job that they're doing at the city, operational needs and, you know, figure out what that's going to look like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonjour. La question sera pour vous, Merceatif.
Concernant donc. Regarding the decision made about councillor Plante. You said that you understand the report of the commissioner, but what led you to this conclusion? Actually, what do you understand? Being the concerns of the commissioner, you said councillors must show more vigilance when they communicate with the public. How did you get to understand that report? The report contains all the details. It's not up to me. To do the research for such reports, to listen to all the parties involved. That's the commissioner's role. So for me and council members, we have to decide if the report is right, if the penalty recommended is fair. And then we have to carry the report and determine the penalty. And that's exactly what we did today. But there are lessons to be learned. When we engage with the members of the public, it's important to talk to them respectfully, to stick to the facts, not only on their integrity and things like that. We have to maintain a high level dialogue. This is something to be learned by all council members and all elected reps.
Don't you think the productivity could be affected by this decision of coming back to the office for all employees five days a week? Because it could create some of the employees would have to rearrange their schedules, the way that they're going to work. So have you got any main preoccupation regarding the productivity?
I talk about culture here at the city. It's extremely important. As is employee wellness, productivity is equally important as well. I think, you know, when you think about that return to work and we talk about the number of employees that that will affect, it's a small number in terms of the larger picture. We focus on the fact that, you know, most employees are in the office, 4.64 days per week. So it's a really small change. One of the things that, you know, we regularly look at is what tools? And we ask our staff what tools they need to do their jobs, making sure that they do have those. So that's part of the conversation in terms of what that productivity looks like. But hours of work, when you look at, you know, how long per day an employee is working, that's not going to change as a result of this, right? That is going to remain the same.
Thank you.
Thank you, merci. This concludes today's media availability. Cece conclut la pointe de passe aux jolies. Thank you.